Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Commissioners and Staff, I would like to extend a warm welcome to you all to the June 26, 2025 City of Roseville Planning Commission Meeting. Please put all electronic devices on silent at this time. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table. If you would like to speak at tonight's meeting, please complete a blue speaker card and return it to a staff member. As a reminder, Planning Commission meetings are broadcast live, replayed on Comcast 14, and available on the city's YouTube channel. I will now call the meeting to order. Lupe, may I please have a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Brashears.
Here.
Commissioner Covington.
Here.
Commissioner Jensen.
Here.
Commissioner Randolph.
Here.
Commissioner Unidad.
Here.
And Vice Chair Hagenjos.
Here.
And Chair Pryor.
Here. I would like to invite Commissioner Covington to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lupe, could you please begin staff introductions?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. Lupe Nelson, Recording Secretary.
Good evening, Commissioners. Joe Speaker, Assistant City Attorney.
Good evening, Chair Pryor and Commissioners. Greg Bitter, Planning Manager.
Good evening, Chair Pryor and Commissioners. Derek Ogden, Senior Planner.
Good evening, Chair Pryor and Commissioners. Eric Singer, Associate Planner.
And good evening, Commissioners. Matt Todd, Principal Engineer.
Thank you. The public comment period is a time for anyone who would like to address the Commission on any item not on tonight's agenda. When addressing the Commission, please state your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. We have one speaker card here from a resident who would like to speak. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Commission on any item not on tonight's So I would like to invite Julia Sweeney to the podium.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff members. My name is Julia Sweeney. I am born and raised in Roseville. I am also the Vice President of the Caseburg Kingswood Neighborhood Association. One part of my story is that the house that I was born and raised in is now the house where I am raising my family of five. And I have been so lucky to watch the city grow over the last 35 years and am excited about all the potential that continues to be ahead of us. I was disappointed, though, in a recent interaction I had in terms of long-term maintenance of some of our older parts of the community. So as I mentioned, I'm from the Caseburg Kingswood neighborhood, and at the dead end of Kingswood, we have a median, a median that I've grown up next to. It has always been maintained. It has always been lovely for people walking by. It was primarily placed there to help keep the neighborhood safe. But again, that was more than 30 years ago. I noticed because we are having our Neighborhood Association 4th of July party right in front of it at the dead end, that, you know, it's really looking unkept. And frankly, it's a fire hazard when you look at all of the dead bushes that have now started to crop up all over this median. So I reached out via that amazing app we have, took a picture, sent in my request, figured this would be taken care of. I'm going to read to you the response that I received because I find it really troubling. "The City of Roseville, six days ago. Thank you for reaching out to us. The landscaping in your area of the city is part of the northwest specific plan. The original northwest LLD assessment was set in 1989 at $100 per homeowner, and it has not been raised since. A vote to increase the assessment has been voted down three times in the last 15 years by district owners, with the most recent being in 2021. As costs for landscaping, materials, supplies, utilities, and maintenance have increased, the district funding no longer supports the level of maintenance that your neighborhood had received in the past and does not allow for refurbishment and replacement of the aging landscape. The service level in this district is reduced from most areas within the city because of the reduced resources. Without any additional funding, there will be further degradation of services to match available resources, such as irrigation repairs will be very limited, resulting in further plant loss. Existing landscaping will continue to be problematic due to age and reduced service level. Rehabilitation, replanting, and non-safety-related repairs will be extremely limited. Increased costs due to inflation and minimum wage adjustments will continue to impact service levels. We know this is not ideal. However, with the funds available, we will do our best to manage these landscapes." I'm just about out of time. Our Neighborhood Association, we're going to meet about this, we're going to continue to reach out about this, but I wanted you to know that as we're planning, we should be thinking about long-term because neighborhoods shouldn't just be taken care of at the beginning. We should be taken care of because we're part of the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Jennifer Chapman.
Good evening. I just wanted to, I guess, update the Commission just on the 705 Sunrise Avenue project, which, as you know, we appealed and later discovered that there was actually insufficiencies in the tree report. The arborist report wasn't actually done by an ISA-certified arborist. It didn't evaluate all the trees that were supposed to be evaluated. It didn't show the tree protection zones as described explicitly in the ordinance. And so it's just to, I guess, make you aware, you know, there's not a consistent review going on when these tree permits go through the process that they go through. And it's, you know, I assume, I don't know exactly, I mean, I know that I looked at a project and I made a few comments. I didn't have time to dive as deeply into it, but, you know, this was a request to remove another 42 trees from the Rocky Ridge project over there at Rocky Ridge and Kirby. So, you know, there continues to be a lot of large oak trees that are protected, that are being requested to be removed, and I'm just, I guess, you know, asking the Planning Commission to engage as much as appropriate for, you know, what your role is. But, you know, I do appreciate that Michael Newman was going to go out, he did go out, apparently, and Greg did sort of give us an update just to let us know that they would be asking the applicant to resubmit aspects of the report, but clearly, it needs to be done by a certified arborist. And when you compare the tree report for the Rocky Ridge project with the one with the 705 Sunrise project, you'll see an extraordinary difference in the professionalism of how the trees are dealt with. The arborist report for 705 Sunrise was basically done by the biologist, and so, you know, they were trying to just have the efficiency of just having one person, you know, address all the compliance for all the natural, you know, plants and animals on the site, but the arborist aspect wasn't addressed as, at the professional level that it should be. So anyway, I just wanted to follow up on that, and I do appreciate that the city is, you know, continuing to work on that particular report and hope, I look forward to seeing the difference when it gets revised. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? All right, hearing none, I will close the public comment period. Next, we have the consent calendar, which consists of routine items that may be approved under one motion as recommended in the staff reports. However, each item may be considered separately upon a request by the audience, Planning Commission, or staff. Tonight's consent calendar consists of one item. Item 5.1, minutes from the May 8, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Is there anyone on the Commission or in the audience who would like to pull an item off the consent calendar for separate discussion? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as listed?
Make a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Covington has made the motion, and Commissioner Randolph has seconded the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Jensen.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hagenjos.
Yes.
Commissioner Brashears.
Yes.
Commissioner Unidad.
Yes.
Commissioner Covington.
Yes.
Commissioner Randolph.
Yes.
And Chair Pryor.
Yes. The motion is approved. Next on the agenda is requests and presentations. Before we begin, I want to review the meeting procedures. First, we will hear the staff presentation. Then I will take questions from the Commission. I will then open the public hearing. The applicant will make a presentation. Then I will open the public comment, and the public will have an opportunity to speak. Then I will close public comment. If needed, the applicant will be given an opportunity to provide a rebuttal. Then I will close the public hearing. The Commission may ask questions of staff, and finally, the Commission will consider this item and make a decision based on the information provided in the report from staff and the testimony presented during tonight's hearing. Item 6.1 is a request to approve a major project permit stage one modification and major project permit stage two modification for 7930 Painted Desert Drive. Eric, may we have your presentation, please?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Pryor and Commissioners. So tonight, we'll be discussing the proposed Primrose Preschool Project at 7930 Painted Desert Drive. The project site is located within the Campus Oaks Town Center development, which is located at the southeast intersection of Blue Oaks Boulevard and Wood Creek Oaks Boulevard. The Campus Oaks Town Center is the commercial portion of the mixed-use Campus Oaks master plan area. It was originally approved at the major project permit process in 2018. The MPP stage one approved the building footprints, which include a total of approximately 239,000 square feet of retail and commercial space. The MPP stage two approved the building elevations for nine of the 16 buildings in the center. There was also a tentative subdivision map that was approved concurrent with the MPP to subdivide the property into 15 separate lots. Currently, most of the northern half of the center has been constructed and is currently in operation, including the Nugget Market, 24-Hour Fitness, and several pad buildings. The southern half of the site and part of the eastern portion across Roseville Parkway is currently vacant. The proposed project is located in the southern area of the site on a 1.8-acre parcel and is shaded in yellow on the slide above you. An MPP stage one modification and MPP stage two modification are being requested to allow for the development of a new daycare building that would be occupied by Primrose Preschools. So looking at the original site plan compared to the most recent modified site plan, the one on the right actually indicates the approved site plan per the city council approved in 2022, an MPP stage one modification and MPP stage two to construct an ACE hardware on the parcel to the east of the subject parcel. In the process, that reoriented the daycare building on the subject parcel is highlighted in the site plan on the right-hand side there. The proposed MPP stage one modification that you're looking at tonight for Primrose would once again modify the overall site plan by reorienting the daycare building in the area highlighted in red and the associated parking lot. The building would be located behind the 24-Hour Fitness Building, which is the major tenant, too, as indicated on the site plan on the left there, and separated by an internal drive aisle. So this is the site plan for the proposed daycare in question. It would be approximately 7,680 square feet in size, would have approximately 20,500 square feet worth of outdoor play area on the west, north, and east sides of the building. The building itself is set back approximately 104 feet away from Painted Desert Drive to the south and approximately 89 feet to the drive aisle to the north, with the front of the building facing Painted Desert Drive. The project would be providing 61 parking spaces, which exceeds the zoning ordinance parking requirement of 55 spaces, and connectivity between parcels would be maintained as there would be internal drive aisles that connect all of the shared parking areas between the proposed ACE project, the drive aisle to the north, as well as any future development to the west of the site. These are the proposed elevations for the project. They are consistent with the modern agrarian design concept that was developed for the Campus Oaks Town Center. The building itself is rectangular in shape, has a variation of wall planes and heights to break up the structure and to provide visual interest. It incorporates many of the materials that are used throughout this Campus Oaks Town Center, including the board and batten siding, wood wall panels, stone wainscoting, as well as metal roofing, and it uses a similar paint palette, including neutral and earth tones. The main entry area is defined by the use of stacked stone and wooden veneer, and it's further defined by a large tower feature topped by a decorative weather vane. As proposed, the building design is cohesive with the overall design of the Campus Oaks Town Center, is also consistent with the HP master plan Campus Oaks design guidelines and the community design guidelines. Landscaping for the center was approved with the original MPP. The project would maintain the required 25-foot landscape width for Painted Desert Drive on the south. On the north, a 7.5 or 7.5-foot-wide landscape planer would be constructed adjacent to the trash enclosure on the north end of the site, would consist of London plane trees to provide screening. The landscaping in the parking lot would meet the 50% minimum parking lot shading requirements, and overall, the landscape plan would be consistent with the plant palette used throughout the Campus Oaks Town Center. Early notification of the project was posted on the Roseville Coalition of Neighborhood Associations website. The public hearing notice was mailed to a 300-foot radius around the project site, published in the Roseville Press Tribune, as well as on the Arcona website. To date, no public comments or questions have been received. In terms of the environmental review for the project, when the Campus Oaks commercial project was originally approved, an addendum to the Hewlett-Packard Master Plan EIR was prepared. This was consistent with SEQUA Section 15164. The addendum evaluated the impact of development of the Campus Oaks Town Center, and it included the project site. Because the proposed project is substantially consistent with the previously evaluated project, no new effects are expected to occur, and no further environmental review was required. So in conclusion, staff finds that the proposed modifications are substantially consistent with the intent of the original approval, and the project complies with the zoning ordinance, the general plan, the HB Campus Oaks master plan, and the community design guidelines. So these are staff's recommended motions, and I am available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Eric. Commissioners, are there any questions for staff at this time? All right. I will now open the public hearing. I would like to invite the project representative for this item to address the Commission. Please state your name for the record.
Yes. Hello, my name is Caitlin Sharon. I am a Development Project Manager for Primrose, and Primrose is a brand of trusted childcare and early childhood learning. As part of Primrose and our franchise owners here tonight, Nathan, Maggie, Todd, and Kate, we are excited to bring the Primrose brand to the Roseville community. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions for the project representative at this time? All right, thank you. Thank you very much. I will now open the public comment period. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward and address the Commission on this item? Seeing none, I will now close the public comment period. Commissioners, are there any additional questions or comments for the applicant? Or for staff? All right. I will now close the public hearing. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Commissioner Pryor, I'll make a motion for, for the record, file number PL24-1064, for the Planning Commission to adopt the two findings of fact and to approve the MPP stage one modification, subject to seven conditions of approval, and adopt the two findings of fact, and approve the MPP stage two modifications, subject to appears to be 83 conditions of approval.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right. Commissioner Randolph has made the motion, and Commissioner Covington has seconded the motion. We have a roll call, please.
Yes. Commissioner Brashears.
Yes.
Commissioner Unidad.
Yes.
Commissioner Randolph.
Yes.
Commissioner Covington.
Yes.
Commissioner Jensen.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hagenjos.
Yes.
And Chair Pryor.
Yes. The motion is approved. There is a 10-day appeal period for this item. Item 6.2 is a request to approve a conditional use permit for 5 Sierra Gate Plaza. Scarlett, may we have your presentation, please?
Sorry, Commissioner Pryor.
No problem.
Yes. Good evening. Good evening, Commissioners. The second item before you this evening is the John Adams Expansion Project. So the project site is located within the Sierra Gate Plaza office complex, as you can see, as illustrated in red on the screen. The site is bordered by Lead Hill Boulevard to the south, Harding Boulevard to the west, and Interstate 80 to the east. The subject property has a zoning and a general plan land use designation of business professional. And for some background information, some previous entitlements for the John Adams Academy project site include a design review permit modification, which was approved in 2011, which allowed John Adams to construct a new play area. A second design review permit modification, as well as a tree permit, were approved in 2017. This allowed John Adams to construct a new, approximately 11,600-square-foot NPR building on the site, as well as some onsite improvements. Now, following the approval of the John Adams entitlement, the City of Roseville City Council in 2020 considered and adopted various amendments to the city zoning ordinance. One of those amendments did affect the John Adams Academy campus, which did remove, which was the removal of public and private elementary and secondary schools from the business professional allowed use table. Based on this amendment, John Adams' operation became illegal nonconforming use. However, pursuant to the zoning ordinance, a nonconforming use can be expanded through the approval of a conditional use permit. Based on this information, John Adams, as the applicant, is requesting a conditional use permit to allow the expansion of the use into the first floor of the building located at 5 Sierra Gate Plaza, as illustrated in red on the screen. So as you can see on the screen, this is the proposed floor plan, and as I mentioned, John Adams is only proposing to occupy the first floor of the building located at 5 Sierra Gate Plaza, which is an existing three-story building. Within the first floor, they propose to only use the area in yellow as classroom space and the remainder to stay as office space. The new classroom and office space will not increase the student capacity of the school, which will remain the same, which was previously analyzed in the 2017 traffic study by Kim Lee Horn. So the student capacity will remain the same as, will remain the same as that traffic study that was analyzed. No additional classroom and office space will also not affect the existing drop-off or pickup procedures that are currently in place for the campus. As proposed, no exterior changes or modification to the existing building or the onsite circulation are proposed with this application as well. The applicant has noted in their business operation plan that at later date, they will be submitting for tenant improvements to allow some of the office space on the floor plan to be converted into performing arts rehearsal space. Again, it doesn't add any new additional students either. The aerial on the screen shows the existing onsite circulation for the campus. Access into the campus will continue to remain the same from Harding Boulevard, and the staggering pickup and drop-off zones will also remain the same on campus. Now, while the driveway along Lead Hill Boulevard is still accessible into the existing building parking lot area, no drop-off or pickup will be allowed, as well as the student parking will not be allowed within that yellow box area for that project site. John Adams has noted that the faculty and their admin staff will be available, will be, will be the only ones available to use that parking lot area for that 5 Sierra Gate Plaza building. Early notification of the project was posted on the Roseville Coalition website in May. The public hearing notice was mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the project site, as well as posted on the Arcona website again, and the, published in the Roseville Press Tribune. It is staff's understanding that the applicant has contacted the owners of the office complex and informed them about this project tonight. To date, staff has not received any comments from those tenants or owners and/or from any of the public hearing notices we sent out. And consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, the project is substantially consistent with the previously approved entitlement, as well as the existing student capacity. Therefore, no further environmental review was required for the conditional use permit for this application. In conclusion, staff did find that the project is consistent with the zoning ordinance, as well as the general plan, and the required findings of fact can be made for the conditional use permit. Therefore, we do recommend that the Planning Commission adopt the three findings of fact and approve the conditional use permit, subject to nine conditions of approval, with the change to condition of approval number four, as outlined in that memorandum that was issued just earlier today. This concludes my presentation, but I am available to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Scarlett. Commissioners, are there any questions for staff at this time? All right, I will now open the public hearing. I would like to invite the project representative for this item to address the Commission.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, Marcus Laduka, 1508 Eureka Road. On behalf of John Adams Academy, I'm pleased to be before you this evening with a recommendation for approval from your staff for the conditional use permit before you that will provide additional classroom space for campus students, most particularly for performing arts and other and music, in the music areas of the campus. Currently, space limitations on campus, along with newer State of California requirements, have generated have generated the need to provide additional programming space before and after school, as well as additional academic programming during the school day for secondary school students, even without any change whatsoever in the current enrollment. Compared to the school's elementary school program, where scholars, as they call their students, have a single homeroom, scholars in the secondary school, school secondary program have a variety of courses in a range of classrooms, and that's not even considering all the elect, the range of elective that they have, that are, again, offered in classrooms all over campus. When those get, again, factored in, you do have greater and greater need for classroom space. Also, the student-to-classrooms ratio decreases significantly with the secondary school students as, particularly when they get to the upper grades of junior and senior in high school. Additionally, the state has increased its requirements for campus services for existing schools, further limiting space available to conduct the full classical education program that John Adams Academy offers. The state now requires that schools provide breakfast and lunch meals for universally to all students on campus, which is required repurposing the school's lunchroom to include full-service cafeterias, as well as commercial kitchens, severely limiting the large multipurpose room space, which had used, been used for lunchrooms, that could, that could be used for classroom space and was used as they try to subdivide, move things around to accommodate their student population. The, there's also been a change in the state requirement, not just for the meals, but also for additional classroom space for various funding programs that require enrichment both before and during and after school, including the requirement now that you have to have, provide an option of onsite daycare that now applies to charter schools. In addition, restricted funding offered by the state for arts programs has increased the need for additional space for such activities as band, as well as theater arts, performing arts. To give you a more detail on what that means with the use permit before you, the classroom space that is shown would be part of the first floor of 5 Sierra Gate Plaza, would allow 150 students approximately to be able to engage in after-school programming for things like orchestra and band and performing arts, expanding the capacity right now on the campus by anywhere from 50 to 75 students. More would be able to, be able to participate in those programs and have adequate space. The space at 1 Sierra Gate, the current campus, that's then freed up, would then be able to provide other before and after-school opportunities, and that would enable anywhere from another 100 to 150 students to participate in those programs, as opposed to other classes, other parts of the program competing with high school students for the exact same space. The CUP before you really accomplishes all that in the first floor of 5 Sierra Gate. As was mentioned, relative to the space that's there now, John Adams Academy has occupied the first floor, part of the first floor of 5 Sierra Gate for nearly six years as its office, administrative office space. That ground force base that is sought under the use permit will provide for the additional classrooms, as well as teachers' offices, breaks rooms, meeting rooms, and eventually the performing arts space that they would like to be able to provide for their students in the theater program. The staff, to answer a question that's been raised, John Adams staff is present at 5 Sierra Gate, both to monitor students who are, again, are juniors and seniors, both as they enter the 5 Sierra Gate first floor and as they leave, and the bathrooms on that first floor of the building are restricted just to John Adams Academy. So, in other words, you have to have a key code to be able to use those, they're not available to the general public. What does not be for you is any change in the pickup and drop-off circulation route or any change in the number of students, as staff mentioned, that were previously analyzed in terms of the ultimate enrollment of the campus. Again, there will be no drop-off or pickup off that Lead Hill driveway that exists. There will also be no student or parent parking in that parking lot that exists now for the 5 Sierra Gate Office Building. This classroom space really makes the campus work, work much better. It will provide really a better educational programming for all the students on campus and those to be, come to campus in the future by allowing additional students to participate in after-school programs. Moreover, you end up with a situation where, as opposed to all those students, students having to leave as soon as the school day ends, which leads to that traffic picking up all at the same time, that'll lengthen that out, because they'll be there for sports, they'll be there for drama, they'll be there for the bands, and there's three bands on the campus that will be able to use that space, but be there longer, so that'll sort of meter out that additional after-school traffic. So, it actually is a reduction in afternoon traffic that you see right now. With that, we'd ask for your approval tonight, as recommended and as presented to you and as conditioned by our staff, we're in agreement with all the conditions. John Adams staff and I are here to answer any questions that the commission or members of the public may have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I would be remiss if I didn't, before I leave, extend my appreciation to Commissioner Covington for her years of service on the commission. She's always been very thoughtful, very deliberative in her, her analysis and her comments, and I thank her for her service as a land use professional that frequently appears before this body. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, are there any questions for the project representative at this time? All right, thank you. You may be seated. I will now open the public comment period. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward and address the commission on this item? Seeing none, I will now close the public comment period. Commissioners, are there any additional questions or comments for the applicant? All right, seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and move that we adopt the three findings of fact and approve the conditional use permit, subject to nine conditions of approval.
I'll second.
And just to clarify, that's with the modified?
With the modified, yes, thank you.
Commissioner Jensen has made the motion, and Commissioner Brashears has seconded the motion. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Randolph?
Yes.
Commissioner Covington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jensen? Vice Chair Hagenges?
Yes.
Commissioner Unidad?
Yes.
Commissioner Brashears?
Yes.
And Chair Pryor?
Yes. The motion is approved. There is a 10-day appeal period for this item. Next on the agenda is Commissioner Staff Report. Are any reports from staff?
Yes, just a quick report out that we are currently scheduled, have two items scheduled for July 24th. We don't have a meeting scheduled for July 10th. And at that meeting, we will have a new planning commissioner. Mr. Bruce Hagler will be joining the planning commission. He was appointed to the commission last week by city council. And at that meeting, as we usually do in the first meeting after the beginning of July, I'll be asking you all to vote in a new chair, vice chair, and then also design committee, representative, and alternate. So, that will be on, on the agenda. Assuming both of these items hold for July 24th, the, one of them's tentative, and one of them is not the most significant project, but probably needs to go. So, I'm, I'm feeling confident we'll, we'll be at the meeting. And I will also express my thanks to Commissioner Covington for her, her term on the planning commission. Her term is chair. Also, I always, as you all cycle through the chair, you always do me a lot of favors, helping out with making sure the meetings run well. So, I really appreciate everything you've done, Tracy. It's, it's been a pleasure helping you and kind of being the liaison to planning commission. And I will be, just for the rest of the commission, making sure she at least comes back, because we are, I'm trying to get John Martin to come back, too, to give him his, a little plaque of appreciation, and I'm going to try and see if I can't double him down, so we can get them both back on the same night. It might be tricky for me, but I'll see what I can do. But thank you so much. I really do appreciate everything you've done for the city.
Thank you, Greg, and thanks to the whole department. You guys have been amazing to work with. This experience has been enriching and very interesting at times. I feel like I learn something new every time we have a meeting, even if I've been here a while. So, Eric's got a whole lot of knowledge, and I love to, because they've been here much longer. But anyway, it's been great to serve. I was sorry to not be able to reapply because of my work schedule changes, but I'm always so thankful to be living in a city like ours with folks like you that really care about this community. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much, Tracy. We'll miss you greatly. It was an honor to serve with you.
Can I add one more thing? Would be remiss, June 4th, we haven't had, have we had a meeting since June 4th? I can't even remember the last meeting we had. The city council approved the zoning ordinance updates. So, you took action in May on, on recommendations to modify, amend the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance for a variety of topics, and the city council did approve that. The second reading was on July 18th, or June 18th, and it will become, that ordinance will become effective on July 18th. So, all of that is working its way through getting codified right now.
Great, good to hear. Thank you very much, Greg. I have one final last comment. Today is Vice Chair Hagenges's birthday, so I'd like to wish him a very happy birthday, too. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Brashears has made the motion, and Commissioner Covington has seconded the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
Made a motion to sing happy birthday.
Good motion.